I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 18, 2007, meeting of the Salina City Commission. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Joka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Pernie.
Here.
Commissioner Vanir.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda today is the Citizens' Open Forum, which is a time set aside for any citizens who would like to bring matters to the commission's attention that are not on the day's official agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? Seeing none, we will continue on. There are no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July, I'm sorry, June 11, 2007. Item 6.2, resolution number 076408, appointing Donnie Mars to the Building Advisory Board and Mary Schaefer to the Library Board. And item 6.3, donation of GPS equipment to Elseline School.
Seeing individual commissioners have a question about consent agenda?
Yeah, Mayor, when I asked about the Lee's, excuse me.
In the minutes.
In the minutes.
Okay. Okay, let's separate them then.
Okay, in the minutes. When we were talking about the Lee logo, I had inquired about future royalties because usually royalties are involved in money, and they were caught in the minutes as loyalties.
Okay.
And I wanted to make sure that that was corrected to read royalties.
Okay.
That was it on the minutes, from my part.
With that, I move the consent agenda be approved as corrected.
Second.
Motion is to approve the consent agenda with the one noted correction. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. We will then continue on with development business.
Item 7.1, resolution number 076406, establishing official streets for the realigned public streets at the south end of the North Ohio Overpass.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I believe this is the last orphaned street that we have as a result of this project. But with the Ohio Street and the Ohio Street name following on, with the overpass, we were left behind with the original North Ohio Street, which was left in place, starting at the intersection of Van Horn and then extending up to Woodland. It provides access to both some businesses that front the east side of Old Ohio, plus access to the Cloverdale area, which is Woodland, Prospect, and Van Horn Streets. There was some discussion early on in the early planning stages about trying to retain the Ohio name in some way with this frontage road or cutoff street, and after discussing this with some of the owners there, we're recommending that the cutoff street be named as Ohio Court, and that would be in keeping with the Ohio name there, so there would be minimal impact on those owners in terms of their addressing or identifying the location of their business. We don't have a concern about confusing addresses, because there won't be any addressing off the east side of the overpass itself, and we do have a similar situation south of Craft Manor, where we have Knight Street, and then we have Knight Street Place running parallel to that, that has addressing off of it. So our recommendation would be to adopt the attached resolution that would designate this as Ohio Court, and the follow-up action would be to put that on our official street map and also get street signs placed in those locations.
The staff report?
Mr. Andrew, can you tell me how far will that street run? I didn't quite catch, and I couldn't read. It's going to start right there at Van Horn and run all the way, like, to Pacific?
No, it will stop short of the tracks, and it will terminate at its north end. It will turn into Woodland Avenue, which then is a dead-end street that goes to the east.
Okay.
And so, there's a mini-storage building up there that Bill Smith has.
Mm-hmm.
It's at the corner of Woodland and Old Ohio Street, and it will essentially terminate there, and when you get, the only choice you'll have would be to turn east on Woodland. But it will not go any farther north than that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Andrew? Seeing none, I'd entertain any public comment. There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt resolution 076406.
Second.
The motion is to adopt resolution 07-6406, establishing official streets for the realigned public streets at the south end of the North Ohio Overpass. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. We will continue on with items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 0710393, amending Chapter 8, Article 3, Section 8-187 of the Salina Code pertaining to classifications of trade licenses.
We've had no additional comments on this item since it passed on first reading. I'd entertain any if there were today. Not seeing anybody, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move that ordinance number 0710393, amending the Salina Code pertaining to classifications of trade licenses, be approved on second reading.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10393 on second reading. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Pernie?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item 8.2, reject bids for the 2007 Brick Street Ribbon Repair, project number 072650, and direct staff to investigate alternative designs, construction methods, and timeframe needed to complete the project within the engineer's estimated cost.
Mr. Place?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This project involves the removal and replacement of special curb and gutter, and the removal and replacement of brick pavers along the east side of West Park Lane and the north side of Crestview Drive. It is anticipated that this project will serve as a project, as a pilot project, to determine the cost effectiveness and quality of future Brick Street Ribbon Repair and rehab projects. On Tuesday, bids were received. They are as follows: Pavers, Inc., $79,960; the engineer's estimate was $61,825. The 2007 budget allocates $50,000 in special gas tax funds from the 2007 Street Maintenance Program for this repair. It is recommended that City Commission reject the bid for the 2007 Brick Street Ribbon Repair and direct staff to investigate alternative designs, construction methods, and timeframe needed to complete this project within the estimated cost. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Just from my knowledge, what was the engineer's estimate timeline? I mean, did they think it was also a three-month timeline, or longer?
Yeah, the issue with the timeline in here is more of a, one of the reasons for rejecting this is the current backlog of projects that most of the contractors around here have due to the inability to get projects started because of the rains. So that's another reason why we believe that this cost is out of line right now.
Are there other companies around that do this kind of work?
I am unsure.
Is the process of redoing the street any different than what was done on Overhill Road? I know you wouldn't have been around for that, and I don't know if anybody else would know.
I don't, I don't, well, the Overhill Road one was a full width, and we're just looking at the curb and gutter, and then a certain portion of the brick into the street. That would be the difference between them.
You're not redoing all the brick, just some of it?
Correct.
Is there any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move we reject the bid for the 2007 Brick Street Ribbon Repair Project 072650.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your turn. The motion is to reject the bids for the 2007 Brick Street Ribbon Repair Project Number All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.3, resolution number 076407, amending an agreement with Habco Incorporated to provide water and sanitary sewer service to a proposed building addition located on the property addressed as 248 East Burg Road.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Burg Road area has had water and sanitary sewer services provided by the city since 1973. At that time, it was in agreement with the John Deere Company. In 1994, Habco Incorporated constructed an office and a shop and a warehouse on Lot 6 of the replat of the South Salina Service Center addition. In 1994, a water and sanitary sewer connection agreement with Habco was approved to allow this facility to be served by public water and sanitary sewer. At this time, Habco has purchased the, a portion of Lot 7 to the east of their property, and they intend to add a major addition to their facility, which includes offices and warehouse space. The 1994 agreement only included Lot 6, so the amended agreement includes Lot 7 for this property. The attached amended agreement includes the very same language as the 1994 agreement, which included consent to annexation. The property was a part of this water and sanitary sewer agreement with the John Deere Company, and the John Deere Company at that time paid all fees and charges for the property. Therefore, Habco Incorporated will not be assessed any additional front footage or connection fees. At this time, staff recommends that the City Commission approve resolution number 076407, authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute an amended agreement with Habco Incorporated, subject to the terms and conditions in the attached agreement. This time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of Ms. Tasker? Thank you very much. Entertain any public comment, if there is any. There being none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move we approve resolution number 07-6407.
Motion is to approve resolution 04-6407, amending an agreement with Habco, Inc., to provide water and sanitary sewer service to proposed building location located on the property at 248 East Burg Road. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.4, approve the agreement for consulting services for structural evaluation of the North Ohio Overpass.
Mr. Place?
Thank you once again, Mayor and Commissioners. Included in part of the North Ohio project currently being constructed is a 525-foot-long, four-lane, pre-stressed, concrete girder bridge. This structure includes several aesthetic enhancements, including custom-designed fencing. On the west side of the bridge, a nine-foot-high ornamental fence sits atop a concrete barrier rail and is bolted to the top of the rail via U-bolts cast into the concrete. On the east side of the structure, the fence will be approximately 11-foot-high and extend over the walkway of the bridge. The west fence has been installed for approximately three months. Cracking in the concrete rail has been observed at several of the approximately 80 fence-based plate connection points. An initial review of the design and installation by consultant, KDOT staff, as well as city staff, has not determined a definitive cause of the cracking. Due to a lack of experience in dealing with this sort of defect by all parties involved, a third-party analysis was deemed necessary in order to determine both cause and solution. A desired scope of services was developed by Wilson &amp; Company, KDOT, and city staff. The main points are as follows: Perform an independent review of the fence connection details for both the west and east fence connections; complete an onsite review and inspection of the completed west barrier rail and fence; and provide opinions regarding the circumstances leading to the cracking in the west barrier rail; provide recommendations for repair options for the west rail; and opinions on ongoing maintenance considerations; complete an onsite review and inspection of the transverse cracks passing through the fence anchor assembly location on the east side of the bridge; and offer opinions on whether those pose any long-term maintenance concerns for either the fence connection points or the sidewalk. And finally, provide a written report documenting opinions and recommendations requested in the scope of services, along with their findings of the independent review of the fence connection details. A list of consultants that could potentially do this work was determined by Wilson &amp; Company, KDOT, and the city. Four firms were selected to receive proposals. Three of these firms submitted these proposals by the requested timeline. Selection was to be based on a combination of capabilities of the firm, relevant experience, timetable to do the work, project approach, deliverables, testing methods, and estimated costs to do the work. The three firms submitting proposals were CTL Group from Skokie, Illinois, Infrastructure LLC from Omaha, Nebraska, Wiss Chaney &amp; Elsner Associates from Northbrook, Illinois. It is our belief that each of these firms could do the requested work, but the general consensus of those who evaluated the proposals was that CTL Group would be the best firm to do the job. This was based primarily on timeline, cost, and their testing methods. They have about a three-week turnaround for completion of the project once notice to proceed is given, as well as their fee was about an average of the other two firms that had submitted. Funding for this will come from the general fund contingencies. It is recommended that the City Commission approve the Ward of Structural Analysis Services for the North Ohio Overpass structure to CTL Group, with the total cost not to exceed $21,500. At this point, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
You know, $21,000 isn't much money in a $20 million project, but, and without, don't mean to single anybody out, but I have a question of why we're paying for this?
It was decided that we should front the money for the study itself. Two primary reasons: One was that we didn't want it to appear like there was any conflict of interest, whether it be if the consultant hired the third party, then there might be some issues on who they hired, the same way also if the contractor did the same thing. We spent some time really trying to find a consultant that had no relation to anybody involved in the project. That was a primary reason. And then also, we decided to, that it was in our best interest right now to get the project going, rather than to spend some time figuring out who might be responsible for what portion of the study, because we really believe that the study will determine that, and we can evaluate those costs and distribute them later. That's our hope right now. But what really needed to be done is to get the study underway, since the bridge is under construction right now, and that east fence should be going up within the next month. We want to get them out here so that they can evaluate that east side before the rail is put up. That's our hope and intention, so that if anything additional needs to be done on that side, they don't have to remove the rail, do some modifications, or a fix, or whatever might come out of the study, and then put the rail back up.
Commissioners, let me add to that if I can as well. First of all, you're correct, we shouldn't have to pay for this. We first inquired with KDOT, but they're in sort of in a similar role, they're not the owner, but facilitating the project, not designing or constructing it. And with KDOT, since we're at the maximum amount of their participation, they could just probably do it and end up charging it back to us. So it leaves us with both the designer and the contractor, and I don't want to speak for Troy, but it's my understanding that they've agreed to some prorated reimbursement. And so we've had conversations with both entities on reimbursing us the cost of this, so we could go ahead, be in the driver's seat, and keep going, but then yet not necessarily have the taxpayers pay for this. King Construction is not committed to being a part of reimbursement for this at this point in time. So we're a little disappointed with that, but we still need to move forward with this, and we'll continue to talk with them and see if we can get them to participate. Again, Troy's here, and he may wish to speak on behalf of Wilson or add if there's anything I left out.
What do they do that, I'm looking at this thinking we've got KDOT, we've got the city, and we've got Wilson &amp; Company, and obviously, I understand consultant having more experience, but what do they do that the entities at these various organizations haven't been able to do? I mean, we've got this structure that they're looking at, what haven't we been able to figure out? Or what processes have we used to look at this?
Well, we've approved the design as is. City staff is, does not have the knowledge to do the analysis that's required for the forensic study, because we have a bridge that is already constructed, and there's been some sort of failure in it. Due to that, there can be several different reasons why this failed. Again, this is why we didn't really have Wilson &amp; Company involved, or King involved in the initial funding of the study, because it could be one, the other, or quite possibly both issues of how this has failed at this point.
Commissioner, also, the issue here is that, obviously, one thing we want to determine is, is the, is the cracking what's considered to be a real minor issue, or is it a significant issue that could cause redesign, some additional construction, and more cost, and we'd like to see. What happens, though, is, is let's say it, down the road, it's considered significant, someone's going to be responsible to make sure that that's fixed the way it should be fixed, and if it's significant, there could be a price tag on it. And so ultimately, you have to determine, is it a design issue, is it a construction or installation issue, or is it a combination issue? It's really hard for any of the parties there to step in and want to commit. I wouldn't expect King Construction to say, oh, well, clearly, it's a construction issue, and it's significant, we're ready to step forward and fix it. But yet, they have a certain role in the process, they may have an opinion on it as well, but it may be different than the designer's opinion. So that's where the third party comes in. It's not as much about necessarily the expertise, although we want the expertise to be at the highest level, it's really more having an independent look at this thing, so that if there's any dispute later, we at least have that independent report to look at.
So the solutions or the fixing of the problem, there's, there could be a couple different ways to fix it, it's not going to be one solution or fix, whether it's a construction or a design flaw?
We don't know, right now.
Okay.
Now that you've explained that, though, I think it makes sense to do it this way.
And because this was before my watch, the one side is nine feet, I understand, and this new side, the east side, is going to be 11 feet? Is it coming all the way across the top?
Almost, well, it's different sizes, because the west side is on top of a concrete barrier rail, where the east side is actually to the deck. There, the concrete barrier that separates the traffic from the sidewalk on the east side is in between there, it's about a three-foot-high concrete barrier. Then there's about a 10-foot sidewalk, and then the fence on the east side arcs up and around.
So it's obviously a bigger, heavier fence that's going to be on that east side?
Correct. And the connections to the east and the west side are both completely different, so we're dealing with two unrelated.
Totally different things. And CTL thinks that they can have this study done within 30 days before it's, we're ready to start on the east side?
They gave us a three-week timeline from notice to proceed.
Okay.
Now, one informal discussion, we talked about actually chiseling out part of what was done there before, that's completely replaced by this so-called non-destructive testing?
To my understanding, yes, and that's a big reason why the, this firm was selected.
Okay.
Well, it would seem to me that this fence and the wall that the fence sits on were part of the original design. City didn't change, there were zero change orders on that overpass, if I'm correct. I think that's right. And so I would definitely think it would be in Wilson's best interest and King's best interest for any future business with the city, that they step forward and get this taken care of. And in the, in the spirit of conflict of interest, allow the city to pick the consultant to do this third-party work, but I find it completely unacceptable that the city has to foot the bill for this. And would want a little more assurance that we will be reimbursed for the cost of this study, and make darn sure that the city doesn't have to pay for any fixes. We didn't change anything. It's either a design screw-up, or it's a construction screw-up, period, or all the above. I don't know. So I'm struggling to see why the taxpayers of Salina have to, have to be involved with this.
One thought behind this is that it will be solved in the future. An additional thought to that, it actually, it could be an issue where that the cracking doesn't cause any structural effect.
Then once again, Wilson should be, Wilson and King should both be very interested that this gets done as quick as possible, and I would think they'd do anything in the world to facilitate this.
I agree, Commissioner, and that's why we contacted them, and as we mentioned, Wilson &amp; Company has said they would take on some share. We haven't got that commitment yet from King Construction. However, we know we need to go forward with this, because we really need to get down to the bottom of what really is the problem here and what needs to be done, and we will continue to talk very directly with them about participating and a reimbursement on this deal. I totally agree with you.
And if we're not reimbursed?
Well, if we're not, it's, we can always use other means to try to get reimbursed, I suppose, but for now, for right now, we want to find out what the problem is and go from there, and that may dictate future action as well.
I agree.
If Wilson, if this is determined to be a construction issue, is Wilson &amp; Company committed to still participating in the cost?
No percentages of, in there, we've just asked for their commitment that they would participate.
But are they committed to participating even if this is determined to be a construction issue?
That's probably a question for Troy, I don't know that I can answer that fully.
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, to illustrate this, our first offer is to go ahead and front the cost of this study, because it's in our interest to get it resolved. And generally, consensus by KDOT and the city was, could that leave any doubt in anyone's mind that it was an independent review? So, I mean, we're fine with that, we're a little bit, I mean, as a government agency, funds and budgets and all that, we don't have as many, I guess, restrictions on us on stuff. So we could have stepped up and done it, because the time is of the essence. Many of these things, we completed an initial study, like you said, but we identified some additional inspections and some additional, I want to say destructive-type testings. We want to tear into that rail a little bit and find out what that is. But generally, came to some preliminary conclusions, but we couldn't finalize them until we do these further studies. One of them is review the backside of the rail, do some more in-depth inspections where we can have access to that rail, get the traffic away from it. And the design reviews of the connections are something fairly simple, and we've done, but we've done them, so to give you some comfort that isn't an independent review, that's why I think about the same time, Wilson &amp; Company and our subconsultant, and independently, I think the city and KDOT came to the same thing, let's get a third party in here. So you, as an owner, can be satisfied that, what's the level of the problem at this point? Is the fix that we're recommending, or the consultant recommended, is that the proper way to go? And is it going to be, you know, something that doesn't deter the visual aspect? And is it going to be, you know, something that doesn't deter the visual aspects of the rail down the line? Or certainly, we don't want something that causes a maintenance issue for the city five, 10, 15 years down the road. So I guess that's the purpose that we went with this third-party review, so. And I can't commit for King, I mean, certainly won't try, whether they'll participate or not, but I can just tell you that we were, made the offer to pay for this study upfront, and the decision made, I guess, from the groups, was maybe that wasn't the best way to go, from that independent review aspect.
Quick question for you or Mr. Place, either one. On Infrastructure LLC's bid, just to clarify, that $5,000 that they estimate would be required to complete the scope of services, is that in addition to an hourly rate?
My understanding was that was their total fee.
Then, I'm trying to understand if they're, if they're, in my little briefing here, it says that CTL can do the job in a quick, a quick timeline, which is actually a week longer than what Infrastructure LLC's is, and it says that their fee was very close to an average of the other firms, it's almost four times the amount.
We had, yeah, well, the average with the other one being as high as it was, was what that was about. The issue with LLC was there was very little in their proposal of how they would actually go about doing the work. And they also have very little experience, which, which nothing, experience-wise, was actually in the proposal.
Okay.
They are a, they are a primarily designed firm, who I actually do have some experience with, and that's where my comfort level with them was, and in doing, getting them to submit, they really don't have the experience that we're looking for, and they don't have anything as far as how they would go about doing the work.
Okay, good enough.
Can you tell me where King Construction is from?
Heston.
Heston, thanks.
Any other questions on Mr. Place? Thank you very much. Would entertain any public comment, if there is any? Seeing none, we'll bring him back to the commission. Would entertain a motion. I'll go ahead and move that we proceed with the award of a structural analysis services contract for the North Ohio Overpass Structure to CTL Group, with a total cost not to exceed $21,500. And again, echoing Commissioner Veneer's comments, that hopefully, we will recover these funds from the other parties involved.
Commissioner, just a suggestion, if you would like to include that in your motion, that we actively solicit reimbursement from both parties, I think that would be...
I thought that's what I was doing, okay.
I would feel better, yeah. I agree. Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay, motion is to approve the award of a structural analysis services contract for the North Ohio Overpass Structure to the CTL Group, with a total cost not to exceed $21,500, and to actively seek reimbursement from the two parties involved. And one little comment before my vote, I, the sentiments expressed by Commissioner Veneer were behind my original question, and the discussion has satisfied me that staff is handling this in the appropriate manner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
That passes four to one, with Commissioner Veneer dissenting.
Item 8.5, approved change order number one for the Downtown Traffic Signal Project Number 051547.
Mr. Place?
Thank you, once again, Mayor and Commissioners. As part of the downtown signal improvements, it is necessary to connect the signals to adequate and acceptable power sources. When the project was being designed, this issue was addressed, and at that time, it was viewed as not being critical to the process, because temporary power could be supplied to the signals and lights by using the existing connections. The original decision to utilize the existing power connections was, was made based on the anticipation of a downtown lighting project. This project has not been developed as anticipated, and what was considered to be temporary, and therefore acceptable, is no longer acceptable, because it is an indefinite fix, based on the other project not be, not being very long, far along at this point. With that in mind, it is now necessary to replace the conduit and wire in the four locations of the Downtown Traffic Signals Project, for adequate electrical service to the new signals and lights currently being installed. Funding for this change order will come from Special Sales Tax Fund designated for the project. It is recommended that the City Commission approve change order number one with Caton Electric, for electrical service connections for the Downtown Traffic Signals Improvement Project, in the amount of $20,046. Be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Questions, Mr. Place?
I'll ask a question. If I understand this correctly, the entire downtown lighting project and the intersection lights were all supposed to be basically around the same time, and so that any new conduit was to take care of the street lighting along with these intersections, is that right?
Well, when we discussed this late last week, that's what was told, that there was, one of the things we looked at when this first came up, I asked the same question, of, well, why wouldn't we know what the electrical capacity, or age, whatever the issue is here, why wouldn't we have already known that, and why wouldn't it have been in the original project, so we wouldn't have a change order? Seems to make sense. And the, basically, what was told is, and I guess my thought was, is it was something that was missed by the designer? That's where I was headed. And the answer to that is no, it was actually brought up by the designer, but at that time, unbeknownst to some of us, the direction provided to the designer was that there may be this other project, and there may be some integration of that project with this, with regards to the electrical. And I'll be the first to tell you that, I don't know where that came from, just simply because the project, the lighting project that we're talking about is one in which is not only not on our capital improvement program, but we're getting close to have you look at in agreement, simply to do a lighting analysis, which doesn't even say there's a project yet. So in my mind, that, there was no way that that could have happened, but apparently, that was direction given at that time, and that's why the designer did not include this aspect in the project, and it wasn't bid that way.
That did come up later, and I'll, I'll say that in reviewing past email history, and then more with the designer, it was brought up once in about September, and then in October again. And at that time, city staff met, or not met with BWR, but told them to proceed with the plans as designed, and that the city would work with Westar to install power system upgrades through separate means. So it was, it was known, and it was an understanding that more would have to be done. But unfortunately, those who knew this are no longer here, so.
Thank you.
I'm the only one here who sat through some 12 hours of meetings that were an alleged task force on the planning of this project. And of course, I, we were told time and again by BWR, and by our former director, Mr. O'Leary, that this was going to be accomplished at the highest possible current level. And I just cannot believe that they took bids without having an adequate power source. It's just, it's still driving me nuts, I've heard the explanations. It was never mentioned in any of the 12-hour meetings that we were submitted, that we sat through. If this project, it's, my, my whole position all along has been that there's going to be very little marginal improvement to the community as a whole out of this, and it's costing $800,000. And I just can't believe that we're $30,000 short on having a way to plug it in, and that the responsible parties are saying it's not their fault. I just have a lot of trouble with that. And I wanted to get that off my chest publicly. I am even more worried about what's going to happen at Seventh and Iron. Seventh and Iron is the least warranted intersection, and the most costly component of this project. It involves putting a foundation of one of the big overhead mass, and you've now seen how big these overhead mass are, and has to go into the basement of the United Building. If they overlooked the simple detail of how heck we're going to plug this into Westar, what have they overlooked on that, where you're dealing with the structure of the tallest building in town, and that's over 50 years old? At any rate, that's pure side speculation at this point, but it is one of the things that kept me awake the last couple of nights. At any rate, I really want to vote no on this, even though I see that there's no way around it, except that we, we have to go ahead and have the doggone $650,000 worth, $800,000 total project has to be plugged in and operating, so that the lights come on. I think BWR should, or that some, you know, there should at least be a proposal to take some of the frills out of this. One of the frills that's in this, that was argued extensively in those several meetings that I attended, was the so-called preemption, where emergency vehicles supposedly automatically turn the intersection lights red, which leaves you a four-way red stop, to me, and to certain people, including a former Highway Patrol training man that was on our committee, those things are ineffective and not worth the money. And it's only about $7,000 or $8,000, I think, but if we would at least take that back out, it would offset not having a way to plug the thing in. And I assume that that equipment hadn't been purchased yet, because it goes on at the end of the, of the work.
Are these the only intersections that are going to be affected?
The four.
Or is, just the four?
Yes.
There's not anything like, there's not a phase two, or?
No.
That I'm not aware of? Okay.
And I will defend BWR also, that they brought this up two or three separate times.
Before we went out to bid?
Correct.
And the final plans?
Correct.
And somebody who's not here told them not to do it? Okay. So that was the whole original rationalization, the conduit's bad, you can't rewire the equipment that's already there, and yet the controls are 60 years old.
So we have no other options?
There's options, but they are just a temporary fix, so they will end up costing us more in the end.
Yeah.
Thank you. Would entertain any public comment, if there is any? There being none, we'll bring him back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of change order number one for the Downtown Traffic Signal Improvement Project 051547.
Second. Motion is to approve change order number one for the Downtown Traffic Signal Project Number 05-1547, with Caton Electric, in the amount of $20,046. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
That passes four to one, with Purney dissenting.
Item 8.6, ordinance number 0710395, granting Southwestern Bell Telephone the ability to provide local exchange services within the city of Salina.
Mr. Gage?
Mayor and Commissioners, we have been with, under a franchise agreement, the most recent franchise agreement with AT&amp;T Kansas since January of 2003, so for about four years. Recently, had you approve an extension to give both parties some time to take a closer look at that. Basically, what we found is, is it's a very prescriptive process today, in accordance with state statutes, whereas in years past, there was a lot more discretion to cities in how they set these franchises up. What we've basically done is crafted a franchise agreement, that's a two-year agreement, it's very similar to what we already have, with the exception, it doesn't include the right-of-way language, and the basic reason for that is, it's already included by state statutes, so it's inherently given to us to begin with, so there was no need to have redundancy duplicated in the franchise. Basically, the terms of the agreement, again, it's in accordance with Kansas statutes, it's a franchise fee based on 5% of the gross receipts for the applicable services, that's again, is how we do that today. The city has a right to review records to verify the correctness of compensation. We also have the ability to change to an access line fee versus a gross receipts fee with adequate notice, if we believe that that would be in our best interest. We looked at both, we looked at other cities, and felt the gross receipts today is still better. Who knows in the future whether that will change? It's a two-year contract, which seems to be consistent with more current franchise agreements. You know, it wasn't too many years ago, you'd look at anywhere from 10 to 15 years on these, but I think this is an example of the current environment with differences in technologies, and they're merging a lot between your cable companies, your telephone companies, and other folks, and also the political climate, particularly at the federal level, where a lot of this is being debated. This also includes a process for termination related to breach of contract, providing first for adequate notice. And in addition, of the two-year agreement, there's an annual automatic renewal, unless there's 90 days' notice by either party. This is non-exclusive, so if another provider would want to come into town and put their infrastructure in town and compete, they certainly can do that. So that's important, and that's, it's part of the climate that's out there today. Technically, we believe it probably is compliant with Goal Six of your strategic plan, that talks about connectivity physically and socially. However, really, this is just sort of a continuation of where we're at today, there's no, at this point, there isn't anything new and additional with regards to services or technology that's being offered. Certainly, the provider, at any time, can add services if they feel it's in their best interest to compete in Salina. We find this item has no fiscal impact as well to you. So a couple of options, we have approved ordinance number 07-10395, which authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract franchise ordinance, granting Southwestern Bell Telephone LP, otherwise known as AT&amp;T Kansas, the ability to provide the local exchange services within the city of Salina. An alternative to is, obviously, do not approve that. Certainly, that would create a few problems, and we'd have to scurry to see where we go from there, but anyway, given the climate, and given how prescriptive it is, we recommend approval of the ordinance at this time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
There being none, I would invite any public comment. Nobody coming forward, we'll bring back the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of ordinance 0710395, which authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract franchise ordinance, granting Southwestern Bell Tech Telephone LP the ability to provide local exchange services within the city of Salina.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10395, granting Southwestern Bell Telephone the ability to provide local exchange services within the city of Salina. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? That passes five to zero. I'm not aware of any other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.